All right, good morning, everyone. Today's the town council regular meeting, Wednesday, May 3, 2023, at 8:00 a.m. in the Town Hall Green Room. We all stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized? All right, here and done, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the April 19th, 2023 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
A second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number four are the appointments and reappointments, so we have four on the docket today. The first is for planning and zoning, full seat until November 2025. This is a Chinzia will be replacing Will Benoit, who has resigned his position, so it's just a replacement. So we're just looking for a motion to appoint Chinzia to the full seat until November 2025.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you, thank you. Told you it was uneventful.
That is gonna work.
And just so we know, so like, as I told, I talked to her on the way in, it's a, it's an elected seat, so there is no discussion that the council would have, because it's not an appointed seat where we made that policy, where we would like them to come in, in case we had any questions. So that was the reason why. Thank you. Next is Zachary Plord, again, planning and zoning for the alternate seat until November 2023, and this is just an open seat that he'll be filling. So we'll look for a motion to appoint Zachary to the alternate seat until 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. And lastly is Walter Beau Clark, again, planning and zoning alternate seat until 2025, and this is a seat that he will replace vacated with the passing of Brendan Saunders. So...
This is a seat that he's held before.
Beau was a, was a seated member of planning and zoning prior to, correct. Do we have a motion to appoint?
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. And lastly, we're gonna put forth Tom Welch to the Coastal Resiliency Task Force. We had this discussion at the last meeting, that we're now looking for kind of public to maybe help out and complete this membership on this task force, so we can get it moving. Tom has put his name forth as somebody that would be interested.
Will this fill the board now?
This would get us to...
Five?
One vacancy left.
We'll have one vacancy left, okay. So it'll get us to six. So we'll have one left. So we just need one more, hopefully, that we can do quickly, so we can get this...
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
I happened to talk to Jeff Shapiro, and he wasn't aware of this.
I talked to Chris.
Okay.
I did talk to Chris, and Chris had told me that he, you know, Chris himself said he was just too busy, because of the marina at that time of the year.
Jeff would be nice to me then.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't know if he would...
But do you think Jeff would be a good, did he sound interested?
He sounded like he was, but I don't know, you know, he's retired, he's...
Yeah.
Oh, I mean, I guess it would be worth it to ask then, to see if he wanted to be interested, because we're looking for a marina.
I mean, yeah, he's got the biggest marina there.
You know, a marina person.
I mean, he's the actual owner of the marina.
Oh.
So, so does somebody want to talk to him, or...
If I see him, I'll, I'll give him a holler.
Good. They've got a lot of friends.
That would fill it, so. All right. Next up is the Harbor Management Commission Marina Rates. So we have a letter from Dave Adams, who is the commission, commissioner of the Harbor Management Commission, and the new fees that they would like to charge. Letter explains kind of last time that they increased them, which is 2014, so 10 years later, they're looking to change their fees, seems to be nominal.
Well, they didn't tell us what they were charging, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, 23, 24, they're, they're on second page.
But they said it hadn't been raised since 2014.
No, there's a rate chart there, too, Carol.
Yeah, but it says 2023 and 2024.
Right, so 23 is what it, what it is currently, and what they're trying to go to is 2024.
Oh, I thought this was upcoming, okay, all right.
These retired people sometimes, you know, it's, they got us thinking, you know, you're retired, you know, come on, Carol.
It's not much of it, it's a nominal, ain't it?
It's a nominal, right, it's nominal, and for nothing for 10 years?
Except for that mud thing, that one really...
There must be a mud problem, all right, we got a mud problem.
If you ever hang out down there...
With the rising tide, we won't have the mud thing.
And there's only two slips there. So I guess they're really trying to make money.
I think that's just because there's probably more work at those areas, because of that.
Yeah, probably gets in the way more than anything.
No tide, you might not get the boat out.
Right.
Just, so discussion? Curious, who, who enforces like the ramp pass, like who makes sure they are?
Oh, they're on that.
They are?
They are on that.
Who?
Harbor Management.
Harbor Ma, you got the Harbor Manager, and then there's some summer health that are out there also, so...
Nobody sneaks by there.
Just a brief comment. It'd be nice to have someone from the Harbor Commission here, when they present something like this, so that when people have questions, you know, this is what, I hate to say this in public, but, you know, everything's town council, town councils, you know, you have an obligation also, as a commission person, to come here and explain to us, in case we have a question, in case the point, Carol, or somebody, you know, just something maybe on TV to future commission people that come up here and just send us a piece of paper, hey, stamp it, you know?
Yeah, or representative, any representative, doesn't have to be the chair.
Or we can just make that, like, you know, basically something that we do as a council. Right. Make sure that we invite them to these meetings, if they, in case anybody has a question.
Particularly like if we, let's just say for, I don't want to prolong this, but we didn't like the charges.
Right.
We were gonna question, would we have to wait another whole meeting, or cycle? I wish we had, but it's just...
Good point.
Thank you, sir. Once in a while I have one.
But normally it's at the EDC meetings. You're on your game today, even though it's a morning meeting. You're on your game today.
Eight o'clock in the morning meetings are good, seven o'clock at night, I'm, I'm...
Any other comments, or concerns, or questions?
Between the two of us, Dennis.
We'll get it together. All right, then we'll look for a motion to approve and amend the rates for 2024 season.
So moved.
Second.
And any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. All right, so follow-up discussion on the EDC, so they obviously came last meeting, they were looking for some, some direction from the council, as far as what they should do. I think some of the thing was more so getting out and meeting the business owners, and talking to the business owners, and kind of going down that path, and I think they, what I remember of is they want the direction from the council, if there's a certain area that we would like them to target, and to concentrate on the first go-around. And I think we had talked the last time, so we should come to a consensus, maybe, you know, now, whether or not we consider it to be that downtown area, because it seemed like everybody was discussing that area.
I do have comments, I'm wound up, I'm ready to go.
There we go.
Uh, you know, I know downtown, very important downtown, but, you know, I would like to see something where they, the EDC, can help the realtors, also, that are trying to fill big boxes around here. For instance, the old Bank of America building sitting down there, that's in Clinton's domain, I believe, it's been vacant for about two years. What do we do to help realtors do things like that? Also, TJ Maxx now leaving, what do they do to help them people fill TJ Maxx? The old Bostich, that's like a forgotten thing. After that gas tank thing failed, it's just like nobody, and Bostich, I don't know what it could be done with, but that would be a big tax, if you could fill it. The vacant buildings on 145, I don't know if that, that empty field has ever been, remember they were gonna do some kind of junkyard there, or re-invaluation?
Oh, by the, by the train station?
No, no.
At a police station?
Up on 145, where the old ponds thing fell, warehouse.
Yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
I think that's still flat, right?
There's a lot going on in there.
There's a lease on that property.
There is a lease on...
Yeah, Mtrack has a lease, so they're using it as a staging area for work.
But I mean, you know, those are big tax items that, I understand that we still want to help our downtown people, so I'll leave it at that. My last comment about that is, we had a business expo here Saturday, I tell you, it was one of the sparsest I've seen in a long time. The tables were really spread in between the businesses. A little criticism here, I think the Economic Development Commission should have been there to help. I didn't see their presence, you know? And on an up note, though, I will do a shout-out to that Clinton pizza, they got something new, that little lady, she's gonna have a breakfast pizza starting May 4, and I tell you, I had a piece of it, it's delicious, it's bacon, egg, and cheese on a pizza, it was outstanding. I mean, but that was nice to see.
Don't you promote, look at you, see, we're gonna put you on EDC.
He's a morning guy, for sure.
Oh, in the morning, I'm ready to go.
Well, I mean, I think I agree with that, and I mean it so that if that's the direction that we say to EDC, is not like, not what we can do, because we don't own the properties, and we don't own the buildings, but going to the property owner and saying, hey, listen, you know, what, is there anything that we could do to help, you know, maybe they can bring some interest of what they think that the town may be, you know, interested in bringing to the town, I mean...
Can we put it on a website or something, you know, make Clinton attractive to outside vendors? We already know what we have, we have these guys downtown, they're good vendors, they're good people, but let's get some other people in here.
It sounded to me like they were interested in making existing businesses happy, and I kept thinking, you're development, you want to get in new business.
Exactly.
And I'd like to see what their implementation of this plan is going to be. What are they gonna do to bring in new business? That's the important part for me. Now that you've got this plan, act on it.
And of course, we got a good lesson now, we got Hank, right?
But, you know, so, so...
Hank can bring these thoughts back.
So Carl, you met with Bob Werner this week, I think, right?
Yeah.
So maybe Carl can share a little more of where they are.
So kind of, the intent of the strategy was to focus on business retention, rather than attraction. There's more bang for your buck on retention of keeping what you have, so the point of doing the outreach was to get a flavor of what's going on in the Clinton business community, because nobody has their finger on that. Chamber of Commerce doesn't have their finger on it, EDC doesn't have their finger on it. When you ask the question, what's going on with local businesses, you don't. There's a lack of data. So, the business visitation was meant to fill that gap, and for business retention, it's you're trying to create an environment, create an environment where the existing businesses can be successful, that environment, and the word gets out, that it becomes attractive to others to come in from the outside. So it's trying to bootstrap yourself, and focus on what you have at present, rather than wasting a lot of time running around trying to get a business that may not even be interested in locating in Clinton. The intent was to focus clearly on one type of activity, which is reaching out to your existing businesses, what are their challenges, how many are poised for growth, how many are poised for being at risk, and then you start managing it like you would an investment portfolio. You look at those that are at risk, and you focus on them, and understand what their needs are, their needs may be something the town can influence, their needs may be things that are at a state level, or then it's just, that's how you do business in Connecticut, and the EDC can't control that. So, the intent was to get from the council, where do you want that business visitation to start? They've got the manufacturers group going, that's kind of a template for where they want to go, but not in a group setting, but it's having that outreach to one segment of the business population. So here it would be, where should they focus? Should it be a geographic focus, or should it be a business sector focus? So I guess in this case, if it's geographic, it would be the downtown, and what is the downtown? What are the limits of the downtown? Is it this building up to Chips, or Grove Street? I mean, where it's, what are the limits of downtown Clinton? And then they can focus on getting you that feedback. Once you have the feedback, you understand what the issues are, if they're land use regulatory, that we can help those businesses position themselves for growth, there may be knock-on benefits that address some of these vacant sites, that help them position themselves. Once it's clear the town is engaged with its business community, and the town is doing more, and the town is trying to promote what happens with its local businesses, that helps fill vacancies, because they know there's a safety net. Up until this point, you've had nothing. There really hasn't been a concerted focused effort on economic development. It's been a little starts and stops, and doing tiny little things, but nothing in a systematic, focused fashion. So the current process is a focused fashion to have the long-term investment in reaching out to your business community. Because if they don't feel that they're part of the town, they're gonna walk, and if they walk, then you're gonna have more vacancies.
Carl, what is our role as council in this endeavor? Do we have one? Should we have one? Do we rely on the EDC for this?
So the EDC is asking for input to start. You're starting from a point of no information.
Okay.
You don't know what you don't know. So, the EDC starts and goes out there, they do the business visitation, they collect the information, and they should be prepared to stick, walk back and go back to that same business after six, seven, eight months, just to do a check-in. Whatever those issues are that come out, and they may not be things everybody wants to hear, but whatever those issues are, they need to be reviewed and vetted for, what are things that the town can do? Does the town need to step up and do something from P and Z, and they need to provide some regulatory relief? Does the town need to secure a grant that helps something happen? Does town council need to do something?
Got it.
So, you would know what your role is, once you have the data to tell you what you should do. Instead of doing a shot in the dark, that you don't know whether it's gonna have any impact, there's been a lot of that. So the intent is to focus on the needs of the customer, and in this case, the businesses are your customers.
Okay.
An example would be what Bob Werner did with the Manufacturing Council. He met with all of them, and had several sessions with them to understand what their needs were, and they said employees, there was a big demand for the manufacturing businesses in Clinton, to get help getting employees. And so they built the development, Bob Werner pretty much, along with Marco Miglietti, built it, a relationship between the high school, and what we call now called the Clinton Manufacturing Coalition. And they have interns, and they have kids that they've hired, and it's, it's a working program. So we knew what the manufacturers, well, we found out what the manufacturers need by asking them, and they said we need employees. So now there's another part of this town, there's retail, and there's residential, and there's hospitality, and you could guess as to what you think they need, or you could ask them what they need, they may not even know. And then you go to other sources to try to figure out what they need, and then you see what resources this town can bear, bring to bear. There are some things, anecdotally, John Allen talks to all those businesses that you just described, there's some of them, and he has learned, you know, they complain about utility rates, or taxes, or typical things that businesses have challenges with, some of which the town can help with, and some of which the town can't. So the first thing is understand what it is that they're focused on, that they can use help with, and then second, we meet and talk about what we can do to help them with that. The facade program is an example of the shot in the dark. We all would like to see the downtown look better, and you think that if it looks better, it would bring more business, and that still seems true to me. But the, obviously, the businesses didn't seem to think they needed that, because none of them took the money. So that doesn't make sense to me, but...
No, some of them took the money, just not in the area that was focused.
Yeah.
So, there was a need, it just wasn't where EDC spent it.
And if we have an area of focus, either geographically or business type, that doesn't mean to the exclusion everyone else, that doesn't mean everyone else is gonna be ignored, this just happens to be the focus for the, in the immediate term.
Well, I'll bring up a couple of points then. I mean, to me, we're concentrating, which I'm glad, but let's face it, Shore, Shore's not going nowhere, he's here, so is Grand Island Beach. Then we got a vacant building there, a half vacant by Comcast, that they'll never do anything with, because all their equipment is in the basement, so, and they don't, they're not gonna open that store back up again, up on top. Clinton Pizza's there, and there's retail, those little shops, to me, downtown Clinton is not just that, two blocks any longer. I think it should be extended all the way out to probably where Stop and Shop, maybe even a little further, maybe I'm stretching it by saying ShopRites Plaza, all the way east, or west, I should say, to at least the vacant bank. We have to concentrate on all of them, and it seems to me that particularly in the West, there's been a lot of improvement and development over there. Milano's done some beautiful buildings there, that taco place, you know, I understand that I've always loved the center of town, but the center of town's the center of town, they're there. Other than the library, I don't know if they've ever filled the whole place, but I just talked to Mario, I mean Angelo LePone, about the fact that, I guess somebody moved out in one of his buildings there, but people that are next door are gonna just take it over, so that's good. You know, right, the financial group that...
Sure.
Yeah, I take it was the, who was the, the big company that moved out there, or the guy?
Edward Jones?
One down from Naches, they got Naches, and they got LePone's old store, is Kathy and somebody Schmidt or something, they have the financial, insurance.
The insurance people, the insurance company, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna move into the next building that was, what was that name of that finance?
Edward James, Edward Jones.
Edward Jones.
Edward Jones, yeah.
Jones moved out, and so there's, you know, they're, they're taking care of that little vacancy.
Yeah, I mean, I think EDC, when they came here, they, they want the direction, they want the direction from the council on what they think they should be working on. And I think that was the start of having an ongoing working relationship with the EDC to see what can be done. I mean, a lot of these things, it's, I mean, unfortunately, the same old story, I mean, you know, the town doesn't own it, they own it, what do you need, what help can we provide as a town, you know, to help maybe promote, or enhance, or whatever it may be, you know, and it may turn out to be, there's nothing we can do, I don't know, but we don't know.
Seems to be a lot of businesses going along, I don't know which one to call, Old Nod Road or Nod Road. You know, there's a lot of the storage facilities, going that way, it's opening up.
But I agree with you, right, the West is, there's a lot of stuff going on the West end of the town, and there's our, you know, the things that are going on, so if we give them the direction that, we give them a direction, let's figure out from A to B, where we want them to go, and just have that conversation. And like Carl says, it may be information that we don't need.
The point is the dialogue, it's that you're doing outreach, and you're not taking them for granted. You cannot assume that Shore Pliants will be here forever, you cannot assume Grand Pizza will be here forever. They're parts of the community now, but how do you maintain them being here, when Grand Pizza is a tenant?
Right.
In a building the landlord has...
God forbid those are...
Limited interest.
Oh, yeah, they live, we're in trouble. So, because Reese, I think he owns that building, right?
Doing the outreach, and making sure that you've got feedback, you learn a lot of things. You learn about the competition for who our businesses are, you learn what their relationships are, and if there's a business that they have a relationship with as a supplier, or somebody that works well with them, maybe that becomes something you recruit to come into town. If you don't know that, then you're all over the ballpark, and you get what you get, and the downtown is a mess, and I think Gary, you were saying, how come we always get the bad stuff? Well, because you go in it like a shot in the dark, so if you get some basic reconnaissance information, and maintain a relationship, then you understand what these businesses are dealing with, how the town has a role, and even if the town has no role, it's what their issues are, who they work with, who their suppliers are, who their competition is, so we have a better feel for what's going on in our business community. If you, God forbid, we have another COVID, and I reach out and ask people what's going on with these different sectors, and nobody's got a bead on it, it makes it hard to figure out how you're gonna respond to an incident, when you have no idea how a business is thriving or not thriving.
On those lines, are we at all in touch with the people that are trying to do the old CVS, that veterinary outfit, how's their progress? Are they being stymied by something that we don't know about, and why have, they've owned that building now for over, what, a year?
Well, over a year. They are not being, they are not being stymied by us, so...
No, I know that, but is there something that we could do to help them? What's their problem? Or somebody should reach out and find out, what is their problems, can we help them?
I think that's what EDC intends to do, right?
That's, that's, that's why you have outreach and dialogue.
So if let's just come up with a, a target area, and say, go at it, and this is what we would like to do.
What's the target area?
We're agreeing with you, Dennis, and I think so, that, that's stuff that EDC should be doing, you're right. Fire department, probably, because that's where maybe the smaller, so maybe go from the fire department to some area down here.
Stem to Fern area?
Yeah, I think even, I mean, there's other businesses beyond that as well, like you got...
Their businesses, all the way...
Mary's, and that other plaza, Wilkins.
What's the most, Carl, in your opinion, this is EDC, there are probably two people who are gonna be doing this, what's a fair start for them? Because they're gonna expand after that.
The point would be to have some structure and consistency, so that was the point of the Economic Development Coordinator, when you'd have one person being the face, doing it on a regular basis, asking the right questions, and building the database. So you're gonna want to have an area that can be covered by that person that allows them to touch base twice a year. It's not a matter of just going in and saying, hey, how's everything, and then you never see the town ever again. So if you can touch base with them twice a year, that's a good manageable area.
Another important point is that although that's the primary focus, the rest of the town should not be ignored by EDC, right? Up 81, for example, that's a major tax base for us, and you want to make sure that's attended to as well.
I would say if we're gonna give this very short-staffed group a target area, I don't, for me, I'm thinking from the fire department to, I would say Grove Street, just because they're empty buildings that need tenants, that they, I don't know if they can provide any assistance with that, but that's the primary downtown area. And if that's too expansive, then I would stop at, from where, from Stem to Fern was, and just include that Chips Plaza, and the...
It's so, it's so small, and there's so few, that just a couple makes a big difference, right?
Right.
You gain a business or two, or lose a business or two, and that really changes things.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Grove Street seems reasonable to me.
Yeah, okay, so how does that sound?
Anybody else? From fire department to Grove? Basically, it's just us giving it to them, giving them some direction on what we think is good, if they think maybe they come back and they say, well, I think it's too much, then we, we can revisit.
Is, is the steep money still available?
For the facade?
Yeah.
Yes, but I've got, the hairdresser up across from Grove is currently an applicant, and Clinton Glass is an applicant. So, there's been takers for it, it's just the EDC wanted to focus on one specific area, and none of those people wanted it. People outside that area, I mean, the whole strip needs assistance, so the fact that you got two taking it.
So we don't have to give that steep money back within a certain timeframe?
Um, there's one year, we can get a one-year extension, and I maintain regular correspondence with the ECD, so that they know what's going on in town, so...
So there's still assistance available if they meet the criteria?
Correct, there was another business that came in and gave me an application, but then did not have anything to back it up.
Okay.
And they said that they were gonna try and get that, so...
I know it's quite an elaborate process.
I don't know what that's gonna look like, so it, it's, it's not hugely elaborate.
No.
The form is your name, your address, those are all, those are all things you should know, it's a grant, and then you get two quotes that tell me what it's gonna be. There's not a lot of work.
And it pays 80 cents on a dollar.
But after you put initially, right?
I think the other thing, too, that we tell EDC is maybe the discussions should also be had with the property owners.
Yeah.
Not just the business owners, but the property owners, because if we want work to be done, we need to engage a conversation with them, so that they say, hey, listen, this is what we have to offer. And then that way, they're having that direct conversation. Because the facade program, you know, business owners, yeah, yeah, let's do it, well, they're not the one paying the bill. So the issue becomes going to the property owner, who then at that point is saying, you know, for whatever reason they want to come up with, but I think that's the other thing that we make sure, that we emphasize that to them as well, that we would like them, not only business owners, but if, you know, there's a different property owner, let's engage a conversation with them, because they may be able to, because again, at some point, if the building becomes vacant, you know, we need to maybe have that relationship with, with that property owner.
Yes.
Right, that, I, I agree with that 100%. I think that's the big disconnect, at least that's what happened like with Grand Pizza, you know, and those guys should get the point that, as Carl made, is if Grand Pizza leaves, they have a, they don't have any rent coming in, so they should at least, you know, we're trying to help them, and give them money, and they're being resistant.
And who's gonna rent that building? If Grant leaves, who's gonna rent that building as-is?
Right.
New tenants are not gonna walk into that building and say, this is beautiful, you know, where do I sign up?
Right.
I mean, by that time, the front facade will be gone, but...
So I think that's fine.
That's why you have to start the data election, start building relationships, and then you've got the basis to then move forward and try and work with people.
So I guess we're good. We'll go from fire department to Grove, we're all good with that?
Sounds good.
And then make sure they engage with property owners as well as business owners. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Um, all right, number seven, chairman's report. I got an email from Mary Ann O'Donnell. She'd heard that when we were having some discussions about how council members may wanna go through and do visits of the school. Um, so she reached out to me to say if that's something that the council is still interested in doing, that she'd be willing to uh, work with us to, you know, get some times in order to, you know, do some walkthroughs to see what they have there, some of the new stuff they have at the high school, as far as manufacturing and some stuff there. On the state side, I was invited to go look. It is, quite honestly, it's, it's what they're doing at the school for the manufacturing part of it is, is, is very good. Very unique and something that they're building upon, so um, you know, I think it's worth at least a visit, so at least maybe we can see. Because we're always asking, where's the money going to, where they're getting the money, all these, you know, I think she just wanted to have kind of an open discussion at that. So if we're interested in that, I will respond back and work through some times on when we may be able to get over there.
I'd be interested.
Sure.
All right, um, that is all I have. Move on to the town management report.
So you have the written report in your agenda packet, so some of the highlights of that is later on the agenda. We need to have a discussion about filling part-time vacancy in the tax office. The sidewalk project we talked about previously, that the town submitted a grant for and committed to a twenty percent funding back in 2019. We talked about where that was at. The price for what our twenty percent was gonna be has skyrocketed. So the state is still looking for engagement on us for interest in the program. So Abby and I are talking about maybe chop it up into smaller segments, and then I've gotta go back to the department to talk to them. Because if the segment is too small, they may not have an interest in participating. So you all seem to be not adverse to the project, but the dollar amount was the challenge. The state still wants us to take a look at it, so we're still trying to hash through what's a viable scope of work for sidewalks in that area and what the prices are actually going to be, so we know what our twenty percent theoretically could be. Uh, COG had its meeting. Some of the items of note included a discussion around early voting. A lot of the small towns in the COG area are raising a lot of concerns about early voting when they're using the schools as a polling station. Does that mean the school has to be closed for the ten days? If they're using their town hall as a polling station, does the town hall need to be closed? Why are we putting all these, this additional administrative burden in for early voting when you could just do the no-excuse absentee voting, which was popular during COVID? It's gonna be basically the same thing. You get your form, you fill it out, it goes in an envelope, and it sits there till it goes through the machine on election day. So the process is similar. But, uh, so the COG is trying to put together a letter from everybody in the region saying, we're not adverse to early voting, it's just a matter of, it's not gonna work well in small towns like it might work in a big city. So it would make sense to follow the pattern of no-excuse absentee voting rather than this other separate track, which will, at present, involves at least ten days. One of those days has to be a weekend. Three election workers are gonna have to be at the location. Uh, and then whatever is collected, we don't know what the storage situation is gonna be for that. So there's still a lot in process. The anticipated implementation date has now been kicked out to August of 2024, uh, so it isn't even gonna be a, a near-term thing based on how they have evolved to date. Um, so the COG is getting everyone to sign off on it. It seemed to be a consensus of the group that there are gonna be challenges in small towns. You may not have enough poll workers to work the ten days. You gotta figure out what your polling station is, whether it's gonna be a statutory polling station and what that means, or whether you're gonna call it something else. So that you skate around, the rule's about seventy-five feet and so on and so forth, so there's a lot that has to be determined. There's a lot that's unknown, and that causes some degree of consternation. Everyone was excited about it, everyone voted for it, but now when the rubber's gotta meet the road, there's not a clearly articulated plan. So unless there's any input from this group that says, no, we want early voting, as envisioned, I would join the, everyone else on the COG signing the letter for Clinton. Uh, comprehensive economic development strategy was approved by the COG. Uh, this is a planning document, which is really just meant to unlock access to additional federal funding. Our area is the only area in Connecticut that does not have a comprehensive economic development strategy. Other areas in the state did get them put together. Uh, they did get approved by the state. They did go to the Economic Development Administration in Washington, so other parts of the state are already poised to be leveraging these additional dollars. Uh, our region has not done that, so now our region is coming in line. That rounds out Connecticut. It was approved by the COG. It will go up to D E C D and the governor's office to sign off on it. And then goes off to Washington while we wait for the Economic Development Administration to give it their blessing, and then that puts us in a better position for being able to pull down future funds from Washington for economic development-related activities. Uh, other items, the, there's a small business grant, which is being offered by the Middlesex County Revitalization Commission. I took the promotional materials that came out for that on the same day, gave it to Paul Orsini to do a push out through email blasts to chamber members. The town put it on its social media platform. Applications are starting to come in. Uh, as Clinton's representative to M C R C, I'll be on the grant review committee. I will obviously not be looking at any grant requests from Clinton, but it's a smallish pot of money that they're trying to administer over the next five years. Uh, the fish ladder continues to evolve as we move forward. Uh, we were originally just gonna build a fish ladder over the dam, then engineers started looking at the dam, suggesting that maybe it was in poor shape and it was gonna be a big lift to improve the dam, so therefore it started to pivot to a dam removal project. Dam removal is just as acceptable as a fish ladder, because it still helps. Migratory ale wives make it inland for spawning purposes. There was a little bit of pushback from the water company, so we've had an ongoing dialogue with the water company on what their needs are for the wellhead that's up near Morgan, and what the impact of that dam removal could be for their water quality and quantity. Uh, so the project may pivot back to being a fish ladder. Uh, other items for you to be aware of, they're not in the report. The State of Connecticut Training and Technical Assistance Center, which is a division of UConn, uh, had some money from the feds in order to encourage controlling excessive speed, so they're giving every town in the state two of those electronic signs that record speed and tell you, well, you know, you're going too fast or you're going the right speed. Um, so two of those will be made available for Clinton. The police department will be trained on how to use them. I just need to sign off saying, yes, we're gonna accept the two signs. Um, so that, that came through yesterday. We, we are prepared to do it. We already do that kinda stuff in town. Two more signs for nothing helps round out what we have in town at present in order to increase awareness as it relates to how fast people are going. Uh, another item for you to be aware of, the ARPA plan for the first slug of cash did give money to the housing authority to evaluate the possible expansion of their facility. They've been going through the engineering of it and design. It looks like they could expand. The next step is some geotechnical work that will have to go on out there, uh, just to verify that it is the way the architect thinks it is, and then we would start moving forward with what the capital plan would look like for expanded housing at their facility. So that's all covered under their ARPA allocation, but they are moving forward and making, making good progress on figuring out a design for additional housing in that area. And then last but not least, CCM had a meeting.
I'm sorry, where, what specific area is that?
At the housing authority, immediately behind them, the existing facility?
At Glenwood?
At Glenwood.
Oh, okay.
Uh, last but not least was a CCM meeting regarding solid waste where the organization was gonna fit in relative to some of the governor's bills on managing solid waste. And what we would wanna do, how we would position ourselves. The governor's bill envisions a five-dollar fee on top of the tip fee. So a lot of the towns were opposed to levying an additional charge on top of everything else. There was some pushback on mandates regarding different types of recycling and solid waste collection because you're jamming it through in a short time horizon and you haven't had any chance to build up any capacity. So there's some concerns about it, um, but the governor's bill does have mandates associated with it, which would impact how we do solid waste, whether it's local, regional, or whatnot. So there'll be more to come on garbage. More garbage, and that's it.
Okay, so we're good with the signs? For him to move forward with the signs, obviously? As council?
I'm just curious, are those signs mobile or fixed?
They're mobile, so you can, you can move them. The, the whole intent is that you can always move that type of sign around, uh, to wherever you have a hotspot to record data. So you know how fast people are going as well as raising awareness for how fast people are going.
Thank you.
I notice in, in an area that I drive through, they have one, but oftentimes the batteries are dead. They don't operate. Is that what it is, batteries?
No, we have two, and if it's not flashing the speed, it's just recording the speed. So your speed is being recorded, whether it's flashing or whether it's not flashing. So the data is always being collected for what, how fast you are going. So just because it's not flashing doesn't mean you should mash the pedal.
Got it.
It's good to know.
Yeah.
You weren't supposed to tell people that.
Yeah.
In Ireland, they have those lights, and if you're going the speed limit, a little smile comes up.
Listen, see that light over there blinking? We're all being recorded too. And then the River COG, the early voting, where, is everybody comfortable with, with that as well?
Yeah.
Yes. And just so I can give you some perspective on that, it is gonna be ugly because obviously it's constitutional amendment that they made, so there is going to be early voting. The issue's becoming whether or not you're doing ten days or fourteen days. There's also an issue of special, um, special elections, where they're gonna do like a four-day window. Uh, the other issue becomes monetary. What obviously people didn't wanna think through from the beginning when they did this was, what it's gonna cost small municipalities? Now, the state of Connecticut has put out that it's between four and nine million dollars of what it would cost municipalities um, to institute this new policy. So the issue becomes then, um, how much is, are the towns and the municipalities gonna have to cover of that? So they made a big push to say that they're gonna, they're gonna allocate some money um, for this, for um, the early voting. And when they came out with the budget, uh, there was no money in it, and they're already at the spending cap. So um, that's why it was pushed off to the 2024, because they didn't think they could implement it. There was, they're way ahead of the game, and they were trying to push it for 2023, and it was just completely impossible to even have that happen. Then it became, well, it's municipal election, be less people voting, maybe we should throw it out there and see what happens. So that got pushed off as well. So um, it's gonna cost towns money, and it's gonna cost towns a lot of money. And for small towns, as a result of this, that's, you know, a budgetary impact that will have on our town. You know, and, and whether that was thought through at the beginning or not, I would probably have to say no. Larger communities, maybe not so much, but for smaller communities, it's gonna have a very big impact on us. I mean, registrar voters, I mean, you can't ask a registrar voters to take fourteen days off or ten days off during this period of time if they work full-time. So then what do you do as a town? Do you have to go out and hire full-time registrar voters? Do you? So there's, there is, this isn't as simple as a constitutional amendment where it says, hey, we agree, let's, let's vote early. And so now they're left with, you know, kind of a whole bunch of other questions, and that's why there's a lot of unknowns, there's a lot of, you know, I mean, they haven't even decided that, you know, the day, ten or fourteen days. The money, the, you know, the municipalities are gonna struggle, so.
I don't understand why not the common sense absentee ballot option. Why is that so hard?
I'm not even going there. That's, that's, listen, you're absolutely right.
That's the point of the COG letter, is that that is a solution that is set present. Everybody kinda has an understanding of it. The net impact is fundamentally the same. Come in, early vote. You're gonna fill out a, a ballot that's gonna look very similar to what your absentee ballot would be. It would go in an envelope, just like your absentee ballot. It would go into storage somewhere until election day, just like your absentee ballot. And then it would get run through the machine during the day, on election day, just like an absentee ballot. So you have the exact same product coming down the exact same production line, but we're calling one thing, one thing, and we're calling the other thing something else. And why don't you just streamline it into one process?
So that's what your letter?
So that's where the COG's position is, is that that works, that does not cause the operational disruptions that we're envisioning this whole process creating. Uh, and then the operational aspect of it is what drives the municipal expense. So just doing the absentee ballots, there's an expense to us to print those up, but then when you ladder on top of that, then I've gotta have three election workers sitting there for ten days for the whole, for the whole time. There's a hard enough time getting election workers for election day, let alone having election workers sitting there for early voting for ten, ten or fourteen days.
It's not viable for big cities either. What, are they gonna close your schools for ten days?
Well, that's one of the things to be ironed out, is are they gonna carve out some new area or statutory definition of where you do your early voting? Because, you know, you have the seventy-five-foot radius like you do on election day.
How much additional voting is gonna happen?
I mean, down the road, that's obviously what they'll look at, but I mean, again, don't forget, at the end of the day, it's a constitutional amendment. It's not going anywhere. I mean, so this is, this is, it, it's here, it's done, it's over with. So whether we, you know, we implement this and then we find out, well, there are really not many people doing it, not like you can change anything, right? So it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a struggle. It's gonna be a struggle for a lot of the smaller towns on how you handle it, so. You know, signing on in this, you know, obviously is important because it's a group of towns that, you know, that, that puts something forth to, you know, to make a voice be heard, so see what happens. All right, anything else for Carl?
Carl, I have a question. Um, the RFP on the, I don't know what to call it. It's not a beach house, but it's the house at the beach that we're looking to use ARPA money to improve that building? No.
The bath house?
The bath house. What were, what were the responses on those? Were they?
It hasn't gone out.
Oh, it hasn't gone out?
The only bit that went out was repairing the um, the gazebo area, well, the pavilion. And that was to come out of the fifty-five thousand that was coming to us from the state. So that's the only thing that went out, and it's to do that sequentially and make sure there's enough money to fit within the fifty-five. So there's a, a logic to what we're trying to do there.
Anybody else? All right, uh, item nine, council discussions. Do we have anything? No?
I'll just wait for the liaison report.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good. All right, move on to town council committee liaison reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I can report on Park and Rec Commission. So, so we had a Park and Rec Commission meeting last night, and there was really two major things. Clinton soccer and pickleball. So I'll do soccer first because that's less relevant to us. Pickleball, more relevant. Um, so just with soccer, just so you know, you know, we've discussed this before, but in Park and Rec, everyone thinks Park and Rec oversees all the sports in town, but that's not the case. You know, football, Little League, lacrosse, those are all separate organizations. The two that Park and Rec does control is basketball and soccer. Basketball's in good shape. Soccer's kind of a mess, to be honest. Um, and so there's really two programs within soccer. There's the Saturday morning Park and Rec youth soccer, red team versus blue team, Saturday morning, all Clinton kids. That's doing fine. That's all like volunteers and stuff. The, the issue is this thing called travel program, which is like one step up from that. So it's all Clinton kids that go play other towns along the shoreline. That's falling apart. There's not a lot of registration in there. And a lot of parent complaints on how it's run. So we brought in Mike Mazzaki, so that, even though Park and Rec oversees it, there's a board underneath it with, uh, Mike Mazzaki heads it up. So a lot of things. So a lot of things were brought up, like there's no elections for that. They just, they have like a life term in there, so they're really not held accountable. And, you know, they're not listening to parents, and it's too expensive and all that stuff. To be honest, you know, I felt like Mike was very defensive on everything. He argued every point down the line. It got very contentious back and forth, and unfortunately, in my view, the commission decided to just leave it as is for now. I personally felt like we should reorganize it, or at least force them to a vote, just to get some sort of accountability to the parents. And for now, the commission decided not to do anything. So in case you hear anything about that, that's sort of what's going on with soccer. And then pickleball. So Carl probably doesn't even, hasn't got it yet. Beau's going to send the recommendation to Carl. So the study was completed for the pickleball courts. The sites at Indian River are, as you come in, right on the right, which is a lot of rocks up there, right? Ledge, as you go down, up to the left is a spot that's all inland wetlands. And then there's another spot, as you come down to the right, which is a wooded area that would have to be cleared out. Then at Joel, there's what I call the grassy knoll. So as you come in that auxiliary field, there's like a knoll there that they were thinking of that site, but that's Board of Ed property. There's also like a spot by the dog park, but that's also involves clearing of Board of Ed property. And then the old tennis courts, which they didn't really, I don't think that was part of the study, but that could be a part of it. So, long story short, out of the study, there wasn't a great spot, inland wetlands, or a tremendous amount of blasting and clearing and all that stuff. So the commission sort of went back and forth, and what they came up with was the basketball courts at Indian River. Those are up for, they go through like a cycle, and they need to be resurfaced and refinished anyway. So they want to get rid of the basketball courts there, which was a big discussion, because it goes from like, do you find new property? Or do you take away something that already exists? So that big discussion took place to say, oh, we're taking away basketball courts. Kids use those. There's men's leagues. Well, they're going to get rid of the basketball courts and maybe two or three parking spots, maybe, you know, depending on how big the pickleball courts are. Put the pickleball courts there, and then move the basketball courts to Clinton Beach and use the sum of the $55,000 that's allotted for Clinton Beach to put the basketball courts there and allow people who are just coming to play basketball to get into the beach for free. So that, like I said, Carl has embedded it. It has, it has, you know, I'm sure we'll talk about it more tomorrow night, but that's going to be the recommendation that goes to Carl.
Did they come up with another movement to the beach? I think you could find another place to put a basketball that's easier to plot down than the pickleball. I like the idea of the pickleball is going up there on the old basketball by the building. That sounds reasonable. You've got good parking, lighting. But to take that basketball, I think you can move that on another park that we have a lot easier, because that's a smaller space rather than taking the beach. I mean, personally, putting another obligation on those kids at that gate between the concession stand, you can eat there free for an hour or two, and then now you can play basketball there free, and blah, 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 blah. You're asking a lot for those youngsters that, around that gate to navigate. As an old Park and Rec guy, I mean, that basketball court, which was used, I don't know how many men's leagues were up there. I know it was used. But you could move that a lot easier to another, one of our other parks, or even in within that park, I Rock. You know what I'm saying? I mean, we've got a beautiful one that Peters right now. That's, you know, the Hyde Courts. Those are beautiful. You've got that thing down there at the beach now, the basketball net and stuff. But I would like to have you guys, I would think, put, just move the basketball to another part of it. We've got a lot of grass fields that we could put. That's my opinion.
Well, don't forget, we have the ARPA thing tomorrow night, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. We can talk about it tomorrow.
Because by then.
I mean, tomorrow, you've got to allocate money supposedly, but you have to have a plan.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, the Coastal Resiliency, they met on May 1st. They received three bids. Tomorrow, they're meeting to determine who to interview.
That's at the regional level. That's not the local board.
Oh, sorry. But that's what's happening. And then on May 10th, they're interviewing. On a regional level, I don't know, Carl, we just sort of talked, right?
What's happening at the regional level is that the RFPs were received in Westbrook, because they're the lead on the grants to review and vet who will be the consultant that will address the work for the regional level. The local committee discussion was around establishing a website, identifying other documents that would be helpful to the process and what outreach is going to look like and things, more of an organizational meeting, because somebody from the local group is supposed to participate at the regional level.
Yeah, that's where I got messed up, because we are, yeah, we are taking part in that interview and the meeting tomorrow, too.
Anybody else? All right. Here and then, we will then look for a motion to go into executive session and invite Carl and Mary. Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Okay, we are back from executive session, and we will now move on to item number 12, which is to ratify the appointment of a part-time tax clerk. Look for a motion to have Carl ratify that appointment.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, everybody.